Good evening. The mayor is present at the meeting this evening but is not feeling well and is feeling a little bit under the weather, so as such, we will be electing a presiding officer pro tem to facilitate tonight's city council meeting. I will now open the floor to accept nomination for a city councillor to serve as presiding officer pro tem for this evening. Are there any nominations?
I nominate Alicia Ray.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to nominate councillor Ray. Are there any other nominations? Seeing none, we'll declare that nominations are now closed. All those in favor of electing councillor Ray to serve as the presiding officer pro tem for this evening's meeting, please indicate by a show of hands. It is unanimous. The motion passes. Councillor Ray has now been selected to serve as the presiding officer pro tem for this council meeting.
Thank you, Kathy. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, to the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We are here for a special meeting tonight. Agenda item number one.
Item number one: Resolve upholding the appeal of the City Administrator of the action of the Finance Committee in failing to award bid 2019-065 for the demolition of 107 and 119 Bartlett and 45 Walnut Street and awarding that bid to the low bidder, St. Laurent &amp; Son. Requested action to approve the resolve upholding the appeal of the City Administrator of the action of the Finance Committee in failing to award bid 2019-065 for the demolition of 107 and 119 Bartlett and 42 Walnut Street and awarding that bid to the low bidder, St. Laurent &amp; Son.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by councillor Lyson, a second by councillor Lejoy. City Administrator Barrett, did you want to give us an overview?
Sure. Let me provide a little bit of background here. On August 13th, the city council voted six to one to authorize spending up to $135,000 for demolition of 107 and 119 Bartlett Street and 42 Walnut Street. These are distressed properties recently purchased by L.A. Community Housing and affiliate of Community Concepts Incorporated as part of the city's Choice Neighborhood Project. These properties, in conjunction with a number of adjacent city-owned properties, vacant lots, that the council also recently voted to transfer to L.A. Community Housing, provide a sufficient landmass to allow for the redevelopment outlined in the Choice Neighborhood Plan recently adopted by the city council. They were purchased by L.A. Community Housing specifically for this purpose and to help position the city to apply for a significant implementation grant from HUD. Following the council's action, the purchasing agent issued a request for demolition bids and on October 21st, recommended to the Finance Committee that the bid be awarded to the low bidder, St. Laurent &amp; Son. After discussion, the motion to award the bid failed on a vote of two in favor, three opposed. The committee's discussion of this bid was focused on the nature of the project, not the price offered by or the qualifications of the low bidder. In fact, following the purchasing agent's initial recommendation to award to St. Laurent, the name of the contractor and the amount that was bid was never mentioned again. Section 6.15D of the Charter authorizes any aggrieved party to appeal an action to the Finance Committee to the council within seven days. I appealed that action the following day, on October 22nd. I did so in order to meet my obligations under section 3.02G of the Charter to see that all acts of the council are faithfully executed. Section 1.02 of the Charter gives the city council the sole authority to decide on policy matters unless otherwise delegated under the Charter. While the Charter specifies the duty of the Finance Committee to approve contracts procured through the competitive bid process, it does not grant the committee veto power over the decisions and actions of the council. The city council approved purchasing policy, which is periodically reviewed and updated upon recommendations from the Finance Committee, states that contracts shall be awarded to the lowest responsible bidder. Use of "shall" clearly indicates that the award of such contracts is not discretionary. There has never been a question that St. Lawrence provided the low responsible bid and should therefore be awarded this contract. While I recognize that the members of the Finance Committee have the right to have their own personal opinions about projects or purchases, the refusal of the committee to award a bid to a low responsible bidder is not authorized by the Charter, our ordinances, or our purchasing policy. Since the committee failed to award the bid, I'm asking the city council to approve the resolve before you, upholding my appeal and awarding the bid. I will note that all of the information that was provided to the Finance Committee is also included in tonight's council agenda packet.
Thank you, Ed. Questions from the council? Councillor Lyson?
Yeah. I serve on the Finance Committee and I was someone who voted in favor of awarding the contracts. And I think, to me, I think there's three things that really come into play that are important to realize. One is the lowest responsible bidder must receive the contract. And there are some exceptions, but it's the interpretation of what's responsible and what's not. The low bidder very, very rarely is ever not awarded the bid. There are some times, but again, it has to be the lowest responsible bidder. The other piece there is, that moves me, is that even during the meeting itself, the discussion never really went to what I think our purview of the committee was. And it kind of veered off. And I think the will of the majority was really to want to create policy. And that's what the city council does. So, and the final piece is that, you know, we do not want these buildings through the winter. We need to get them down, get them down soon before cold weather gets. So there's timing issues here, there's overstepping, exceeding authority, in my opinion, as well as, you know, not observing the cardinal rule, you award it to the lowest responsible bidder. That's our chore.
Further questions or comments from the council? I'll move to the public. Yeah?
Let's speak to the council.
Sure thing.
My name is Dennis Terrio. I'm chairman of the Finance Committee for the city of Lewiston. I guess to begin with, before I do the statement, I disagree with some of the items that Mr. Lyson has just said. And I think that'll become pretty clear when I start explaining this. Members of the council, I am here this evening not because I was asked by the city administrator to do so. I am here to shed a bit of insight into what formulated my decision to vote no on the bid. A committee member who also voted no could not be here due to a conflict with her pre-planned vacation. First and most important comment to make, St. Lawrence &amp; Son gave an excellent bid and met all the requirements needed to do the job in question. Mr. Barrett and members of his staff would like you to believe or create the veil that the Finance Committee has not satisfied the work with the work or bid of St. Lawrence &amp; Son, quite the contrary. For the record, and I believe I speak for the entire Finance Committee, in saying St. Laurent &amp; Son, with owner Gary St. Lawrence, has given the city of Lewiston excellent bid prices, has saved the Lewiston taxpayers a great deal of their money, and has produced a very high-quality finished product. So let's put that behind us. Finance Committee members wear many hats. We review the city's budget, Lewiston Capital Improvement Program, pension plans, acquisition and sale of Lewiston city assets, and more. So when we review an agenda item in front of us, we do not leave our other responsibilities at the curb. We ask any and all questions to formulate, hopefully, the best decision. A bit of background on these buildings. When these properties were acquired, it was the Finance Committee that tabled the recommendation to approve the acquisition and have staff go back and strengthen a very weak right of reverter on this project. That term is used to provide direction and clarity and give rights to the city should the project fail and not perform. That was done somewhat. The Finance Committee still voted down the project at that time due to insufficient clarity of how this project was to be financed and implemented in a timely manner and lack of analysis on impact to other city systems, such as schools, for example, and city administrator not having a model that would project the final cost of overbuilding low-income housing and the impact to the budget and the city taxpayers. You now have agenda item number three, bid 2019-065 for the demolition of 107, 119 Bartlett and 42 Walnut in front of you. Mr. Shaw, a member of the Finance Committee at that meeting, asked the first question: Why is the city of Lewiston tearing down buildings for other people who allegedly have the financial capacity to do it themselves? I found it to be an excellent question, which leads into the policy question of, is the city of Lewiston now in the business of tearing down buildings for other entities or people in general? That was discussed with no clear answer. In my opinion, it would have been much simpler and cleaner for the city administrator to propose to the city council for the teardown to just give the amount needed or lend it to L.A. Community Housing with provisions to recoup it should non-performance of this project happen.
Mr. Terrio, your three minutes is up. If you could...
Is that all you're going to give to the Finance Committee? Please, please.
Are other members... You're speaking as a member of the public currently?
Well, I'm actually speaking for a member of the Finance Committee also.
So this is public comment right now?
So if you want to limit this...
This is public comment right now, so we do have members of the Finance Committee who are representatives of the city council on that, and so I will invite them to speak again as well.
I object.
Wow.
I wish to hear more from this particular individual, as he is the chair of the Lewiston Finance Committee.
Let's understand one thing. If you don't give me the right to speak, I'll buy a half-page in the newspaper and I'll print this, okay? Which basically will make everyone understand why the council is doing many things behind closed doors here.
Okay.
And not providing adequate information to the council.
We are in public comment right now.
Excuse me?
We are in public comment period. The rules of public comment period are three minutes, and if you want to give the letter to councillor Markot, he could possibly read it. That's a solution that you can move forward with.
Point of inquiry?
Yep.
Will Mr. Terrio have an opportunity, once public comment is complete, to complete his statement?
That...
Boy, this is quite an insult. Quite an insult to the Finance Committee.
Would we ask a member of the city staff, public works, recreation...
They speak all day long. I've sat in your seat.
So we have members of staff who have spoken on this. Would you, I mean...
Madam Chair?
Yes.
City councillors, planning board members, Finance Committee members, and others, our city employees, if this was designated as part of a public comment period, the courtesy should have been extended for the chair of the Finance Committee to give his comments either before or after the public comment period.
Let's go with after, then.
After. Thank you.
Any further public comment?
I don't have deep technical understanding of the issue, but I do operate a property that's between these two, two of the buildings on Bartlett Street that are due to come down. And I know that everybody just assumed that because the council approved it, things were going to go forward on a schedule that would get those buildings down this fall. And as such, the fire department conducted some very important training with their folks on buildings. They don't usually get to do that. We had people standing by to do salvage, all depending on the timings, who were trying to make the best possible use of this situation where these buildings were coming down. And at this point, because the fire department has been through, they basically look like Swiss cheese, and people can get into them easily, and they can have squatters, and they can have animals, and all sorts of unsafe conditions. So people move forward, assuming that the normal procedure was going to be followed. And I think we're just in a really precarious situation right now with these buildings. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments from the public? Seeing none, Mr. Terrio?
Thank you. As I was saying, Mr. Shaw, a member of the Finance Committee, asked the first question: Why is the city of Lewiston tearing down buildings for other people who allegedly have financial capacity to do it themselves? I found it to be an excellent question, which leads into the policy question of, is the city of Lewiston now in the business of tearing down buildings for other entities or people in general? That was discussed with no clear answer. In my opinion, it would have been much simpler and cleaner for the city administrator to propose to the city council for the teardown to just give the amount needed or lend it to L.A. Community Housing with provisions to recoup it should performance of this project not happen. Based on the lack of staff response, I began formulating direction of my vote. In our packet item number three, the only source of our information was the third line down, was the third line down in the opening statement. LACH, L.A. Community Housing, has authorized the city to coordinate on their behalf. That was written by city staff. Was this a new policy direction that the Finance Committee was not aware of? How do we formulate a contract to protect the city's interest liabilities? I will return to this line toward the end of my presentation. The Finance Committee continued to ask questions on the tonnage that will be forgiven at the landfill. Those have costs and have staff report back to the Finance Committee after the project is completed for total tonnage used and costs incurred to Lewiston. It's not in here, but please understand, now that we've opened it up and I agreed with the training for the fire department, understand that now with the rains that we've had, the dry wood that is inside has now become completely soaked in that building, and your tonnage will go up, and your costs will go up. So for Mr. Barrett to say that there was no project-related questions is very inaccurate in his reporting to you. Mr. Barrett would like you to believe that we do not have the right to refuse a low bid. However, all bid requests that go out for bid, including this one, 2019-065, had on the bid request sheet that went out, a very prominent line, which stands alone at the bottom, "for a purpose," that states, and I quote, "The Lewiston Finance Committee reserves the right to accept or reject any and all bids." That is this copy right here. That's a copy of that bid item that was online and went to every bidder. So did we have the right to vote this item down? Not, it would appear, so based on a general statement to bidders without additional clarification given to bidders. The Finance Committee will work on clearing up that conflicting terminology in the very near future. We are back to, why did I vote on this bid? Very simply, lack of documentation. The line I quoted above, "LACH has authorized the city to coordinate on their behalf," that authorization document was not in our item packet. I have no knowledge if it actually even exists, nor do I believe any member of the Finance Committee has seen an authorization document. Why is it important? Now the rest of the story. When I served as a Lewiston city councillor and reviewed Bates Mill #5, future disposition, that council asked all needed questions, sent out an RFP, request for proposals to develop the building, checked all possible problems with historical preservation monies, any conflicts with Florida Light and Power, well, which had interest in water rights, engineering report on cost to rehab that building. After checking and pursuing all avenues, we had a clear slate to tear that mill down, and that council initiated a bid request, which brought to this city a fantastic bid price, which also gave us the ability to use the concrete material, generate the shore-up projected projects in that area that needed quality structural fill. The city accepted the bid. And then there was a change in council, as there always is. Mr. Barrett, the new city administrator at that time, informed me that he had asked, he was asked to go to Mr. Platt's office to discuss Bates Mill #5, that he was informed that there was a security agreement on that building to secure their interests, that the city of Lewiston performed on building the parking garages he needed and Bates Mill #5 to be used as compensation should the city change its mind. The information was never given to the council I was with. In executive session with the then-administrator Jim Bennett, city attorney, finance director Dick Mativia, I asked, is there anything that holds us back from tearing that building down? They said no. However, they had to know of the security attachment. They created it. The people of Lewiston had to shell out $80,000 to cancel the demolition bid, and we still have an undeveloped building with only promises. Now you see my distrust in not seeing actual documents with only staff stating, we have authorization on their behalf. I voted no, and would vote no again, based on what has been provided. I will end by saying, the Lewiston Finance Committee will not rubber stamp a bid to create credibility for staff using a Finance Committee's positive vote. No one owns my vote. If Mr. Barrett, the city administrator, believes otherwise, then he should request a rubber stamp from the council, at which point I will notify the state of Maine that the Lewiston Finance Committee is no longer a viable entity under Article 8A of the Maine Constitution, and they can conduct their own investigation for a finding of facts. Thank you for your time.
We will bring it back to the council. Councillor Markot?
Yes. I happen to agree with everything that Chairman Terrio has said on the technicalities of the procedure of the Finance Committee. However, I'd like to make another statement, seeing as how back in August, I was the one lone member, and I suspect the same will be true tonight. And I understand that the condition of the building is such that it needs to come down now. And that will happen at the end of this proceeding, I'm sure. So, to begin, the local taxpayers of Lewiston are being forced, in defiance of the majority vote of the Finance Committee, to pay for the demolition of buildings owned by a private, nonprofit entity. This is not only an improper use of taxpayer funds, but the very same taxpayers who will be paying for this are the same people who will be asked to pay for the subsidized housing that will be built in the imprint and shadows of the demolished buildings. And it is not only the subsidized housing that will, that they will be paying for, but the unending ripples of taxpayer-funded services from first responders to schools and beyond that will be ongoing long after the buildings are populated. The empty family homes that people are being taxed out of, yet few are moving into, because those who are moving to Lewiston in the greatest numbers don't seem interested in buying homes, and those who are interested in buying homes are not moving to Lewiston. While seniors, those who are one of the generations who built the best of what Lewiston has been, are taxed out of their homes, tightening expenditures or choosing between, say, food and medicine on limited social security funds that should see them through their golden years in the place that they love and call home, they are then asked to pony up for subsidized housing. Before drawing more need to our community, the time has come to take care of our seniors first. Tonight's agenda item is an inappropriate expenditure of the Lewiston taxpayers' limited financial resources, and I will not vote to support this override of the majority vote for the Lewiston Finance Committee.
Further comments or questions from the council? Councillor Pat and Gil? Oh, you're not done?
Well, if he wants to speak, I was just going to move the question. But I'll...
Will he have a speak? Okay.
So, based on some of the comments tonight, it would appear that either the application or the bid doesn't match city charter, so it would appear that we're giving people inaccurate information if it says that the Finance Committee can approve or reject any of these bids. I don't know if that's in line.
I'm not sure I understand the question. You try again.
Well, because it, Chairman Terrio said that the paperwork that was given out for people to bid on the process says that the Finance Committee alone has the authority to approve or reject these, which seems to conflict with how the charter line item that we were given here, 3.1.6.1, that we are supposed to award these bids.
That's correct. That's my, my interpretation is that in this instance, when there's a bid that goes before the Finance Committee, they really don't have the discretion to step outside of the evaluation of that bid and to look at factors other than those that are listed in the city's policy, similar to the planning board. Individuals on planning board may disagree with the project when they're applying a site plan review, but their obligation is to apply that site plan review.
Right.
They are an administrative body, not a policymaking body.
Yeah. So I don't, I don't know if that's something the council needs to initiate to make sure that forms that we're giving out to people are appropriate and work within our means.
Well, frequent, the, there is a language at the bottom of all of our bids that says city reserves the right to accept, you know, to reject all bids. And there are times when that has been done. It's been recommended by the purchasing agent or a staff member to reject bids. For example, the bids come in too high. There have been occasions where questions from the Finance Committee have led to questioning some of the issues about how the bid was issued or the details and specifications of the bid, and in that case, the bid has been rejected, but it's for the purpose generally of rebidding that bid, not, not voiding or vetoing the purpose.
Right. So I don't, I don't know, maybe if there's better language that we can put with that to express that.
Just got a clarifying question on that.
Sure.
Okay. So does the RFP say that the Finance Committee has that sole authority?
Yes.
From Mr. Ward or from Mr. Barrett?
Do you want to see the document?
Do we have copies of that document?
May I explain?
Want to read it or do you want me to give this to you?
Hang on a minute, I'm trying to find. I brought the language in charge.
Let's wait for him to find it.
Yeah, if I can.
Mr. Lyson?
Yeah, thank you. Again, the, that clause is for, maybe we don't have the resources for it in, you know, that have been allocated. This, this is in fact a part of a, you know, a plan that we as a city council endorsed. Then, we said, let's use this much of our demolition money to take these buildings down to assist in this redevelopment plan. It's quite exciting. So, you know, if in fact, again, I go back, I haven't heard you address, or anyone address on the Finance Committee, why they're not the lowest responsible bidder.
Yes, I did. I did write from the very beginning.
No, no. Again, Dennis, you, to me, you didn't address that issue. You, you said that they were.
So, Mr. Lyson, we're going to move back to councillor Pat and Gil because we, I interrupted him and for something on that same topic.
Yeah, okay.
But we'll come back to you after. Did you find the answer to that question?
The, the section of the policy that applies to rejection of bids, the Finance Committee, upon recommendation of the director or designee, shall have the authority to reject any and all bids when the bids are deemed non-responsive, token, collusive, or otherwise non-acceptable, and such action is in the best interest of the city.
Under the advisement of staff? Is that the first part of the clause?
That is the language of the, I believe that probably refers to the Finance Director.
Sorry.
That doesn't match what you said.
So councillor Pat and Gil is going to continue?
So, just to, just to finish up with this, I voted for it. I'm not in support of the overall arcing proponents of this plan, but the buildings were a safety issue before. The buildings are even more of a safety issue now. So while I don't support that, I support keeping people safe, and especially as we head into the winter months, this is only going to be a worse-off situation with people getting into these buildings. And by all accounts of this, there's more at play here. It's very disappointing that it came to the council in such a way. And I'm, I'm not okay with that at all. And I suspect that I'm not the only one that can get that read off it right now. But let's keep people safe. That's the only thing I'm going to say about that.
Thank you. We'll move back to councillor...
I would agree with you.
We will move back to councillor Lyson.
Yeah, no, I just, I was trying to explain that one element of that, why that clause is there. It gives us that right to reject them and that the people who are bidding, but again, if you're, I have to go back to, if you're the lowest responsible bidder, you should be awarded the bid, you know? That's the only question in mind. And if in fact that doesn't happen, it isn't at questioned, then we have to move forward with that type of a vote. And some of us did, and we're disappointed that, that the rest of the members did not as well. So knowing how important this project is to the future of the city, how we need partners in it, like Community Concepts, and, you know, in order to move this city forward, we need some investment. This is not, you know, we need a little bit of skin in the game, and we've done demolitions to buildings... to buildings for a long time, and we set up a budget for that. We understand. I'd like to see building up for what we tear down, number-wise, but I think in a -- I think this project as a whole is pretty good balance about creating some really good affordable and mixed-use buildings, and I'm excited for it to go forward. And we need to act because the winter is upon us, and it's not a Game of Thrones economy, by the way.
Further discussion on the council? Councilor Markot.
I agree with Councilor Patengill, and I heard the Chair of the Finance Committee also agree with the statements about public safety. We, as a city, also need to look for the public financial security of our citizens, and that's a concern here. Chairman Ontario made some excellent points about the process, and it needs to be deliberated, whether at the Finance Committee level or the City Council level. Changing gears here, when I heard the full context of the language, it says otherwise best interest of the city. And I remember this happening once before, back sometime in the early 2010s, and that's what I hung my hat on. Best interest of the city. That's open-ended. And the Finance Committee, in its role, and if you even begin to consider what a Finance Committee does in the private sector, they consider every aspect. One of the questions that was asked at the Finance Committee was about return on investment. That answer couldn't sufficiently be responded to. I mean, a Finance Committee is, like it was stated earlier, is not a rubber stamp. Finance Committee's members come in and they have two votes, usually, unless it's a table or an abstention or a recusal, but it's yes or no. To say that you have to vote yes, that's a curious item all in itself. So, to suggest that we must, shall, I think we have a lot of work to do on that cleanup of the language. But as far as tonight, yeah, the safety of our citizens are going to be secured. The vote's going to prevail. I choose to retain my position that I shared in August and at the Finance Committee, and we can learn from this experience, and we can improve from this experience. So, I move the question.
So, a motion has been made to move the question, so it would need to be seconded.
I'll second that.
So, it's been moved and seconded to move the question. It is not debatable, and so it would go for a vote, and then if that motion passes, then we would go for immediate vote on the pending motion to approve the resolve. So, all those in favor of approving the motion to move the question? All those opposed? Motion passes by a vote of six to one. So, the motion now immediately before you, and I will read it for just the sake of the record, is to approve the resolve upholding the appeal of the city administrator of the action of the Finance Committee in failing to award bid 2019065 for the demolition of 107 and 119 Bartlett and 42 Walnut Street and awarding that bid to the low bidder St. Lauren &amp; Son. So, if you're all set, I can call the roll.
Call the roll.
Counselor from word one?
Yes.
Word two?
Yes.
Word three?
Yes.
Word four?
Yes.
Word six?
Yes.
Word seven?
No.
And Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Motion passed by a vote of six to one.
Thank you for that. Agenda item number two.
Item number two. Lost my agenda. Item number two is a -- thank you. Budget status updates year-end fiscal year 19 and first quarter fiscal year 20.
This doesn't need a motion, correct?
It doesn't. It's a presentation from the Finance Director.
Oh, good.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Councilors. I am happy to report the unaudited results from the FY19 fiscal year-end, as well as discuss the first quarter of FY20. I will say, the revenue statement that was circulated, we did have one late audit adjustment that I'm happy to say is at least in our favor. So, the total revenues, we had a budget of $68,781,609. The actual expenditures or revenues received were $70,45,837, producing a surplus of a little over $1.2 million, or 1.02% above budget. The amount of the late adjustment, for those people who are trying to do the math really quickly, was an investment earning adjustment of $204,031.67. So, that will increase the bottom line of the reports that were in circulation in your packet. Other highlights as far as the revenues go, auto excise continues to be our driving force behind revenue exceeding budget projections. We had a surplus of a little under $850,000 this year, totaling, and I believe this is the first time in a long time, we pierced the $5 million mark for auto excise, which was just shy of $5.2 million. Inspection fees, which includes building, electrical, and plumbing, had a surplus of $76,000, totaling $228,000, although this amount was down slightly from FY18's amount of $263,000. Revenue sharing produced a little over a quarter of a million dollars in surplus, totaling $3,044,300, which partially offset GA's deficit. And again, when GA has a deficit on the revenue side, that means the expenditures are under budget as well, because the state reimburses 70% of that. So, based upon the usage, the expenditures were down almost $300,000 last fiscal year. Tipping fees shrank by about $51,000, or must have been more than that, $51,000. There, I had a hiccup on my typing here. $51,000. They had an isolated project last year that had dedicated tipping that we knew was going to be a one-time increase in the revenue source. The other revenue that shrank from prior years was the apartment building trash program. Since we first instituted that program, we've been seeing declines in that revenue line item for a number of years, as the landlords are seeking other options. And again, that decreased by $21,000. The investment earnings had a surplus of almost $300,000. That, we're now starting to see the interest rate decline again, so I'm wondering how we're going to be much, much closer to budget in FY20 with regards to the volatility in the interest market. Monthly parking produced a surplus of about $68,000. Current real estate tax collections are on par with prior years, and personal property collection is at 98% collected versus FY18's 96% collected. School department had a prior period adjustment of about $1.8 million. They had, over the years, accumulated money to be paid to the state of Maine for essentially special ed seed reimbursement. Talking to the state and verifying it as part of the audit process this year, it was determined the state has changed their process on how they're collecting the reimbursement for that money. So, the accrual that the state or the school department had been doing for a number of years is no longer warranted. So, they did adjust that as far as the FY19 audit, which will restate FY18's fund balance for the school department. So, between that and their just shy of $4 million surplus this year, they're going into next year's operating cycle of about a $6 million fund balance. In discussions with the school department, they are looking at particularly with the prior-year adjustment, acknowledging that it's a one-time hit, so they may be looking at adopting parts of our fund balance and using that for capital outlay to pay down debt service in their capital requests in the LCIP. But that is, you know, the school committee will be evaluating that further. On the expenditure side, we had a budget of $54,659,512. Actual results produced a surplus of $1.8 million. Are we -- were 97% expended of the total operating budget. This 97% tends to be what we traditionally see, where -- with no remarkable overall adjustments from prior-year activity. Again, some of the notable items, you might recall the effort that we have done to replace the streetlights to LED. That produced a savings of $64,000 in utilities in the streetlight budget. As I mentioned, the social services costs were reduced from prior years in the budget by about $655,000. Armory repair costs produced a surplus of about $65,000. Delaying the bond sale until this fiscal year in order to properly meet our spend-down and hopefully receive some better interest rates produced a savings in bond interest of about $99,000. Overall salaries and benefits was probably the biggest line item, produced a savings of about just under $900,000, of which $263,000 relates to salaries. And that's in spite of the growth we've seen in patrol and firefighting overtime budget. That, both of those items were clearly above budget, as well as the balance we saw in fringe benefits, insurance, retirement, and so forth. Clearly, we're seeing the under-budgeting or the under -- the reduced health insurance rate last year compared to budget was a big lion's share of that cost savings. We probably do not have that same experience this year. We budgeted in the FY20 budget, 8% for a health insurance increase, and we just received word that it's going to end up being 10%, so we're looking at a shortfall right there of about $36,000, $37,000. Some of that will be made up with attrition through turnover and retirements and so forth. And that's probably the biggest effort that we saw with fringe benefits and salaries last year. We had significant turnover throughout the city in FY19.
Heather, while you're still on expenditures, can I ask about line item 4392, city-owned property?
Yes.
It's 707% of what was expected. I realize it's, you know, $75,000, but if you could give further detail there?
Yes, we had acquired the canals, and that was not part of the budget, because we were not sure when we were going to close on the canals. So, that's the lion's share of that. Plus, some of the tax-acquired property goes into that account, so if we have to do any maintenance, snow plowing, things like that, and if nothing else, we pay stormwater charges on those tax-foreclosed parcels.
It seems like in FY18 as well, we were well, two and a half times over that budget as well.
Right. So, we are --
Do we expect it to kind of level out now, or?
Yes, and if nothing else, at least part of the next year's budget, we're still getting a handle, particularly on the electrical cost of the canals. That was, we had to develop some trend information before we could properly budget for that.
Thank you. Councilor Lyson?
So, that was a long way of saying that it's pretty good news, though, right?
That's correct.
I think that's what I'm reading out of it.
Yes.
I'm not spending it yet, but because I know there's a lot of uncertainties as we go forward, but I appreciate the good news, and I appreciate the update even more importantly, if it was one way or the other, but I'm glad that it's positive.
You have more?
I have just two other little points real quick. So, right now, you're used to talking about the fund balance policy, particularly during the budget cycle, where we have the floor of 8%, the ceiling of 12% of general fund revenues and transfer. Right now, the unaudited fund balance coverage is about 13.808%. So, if council chooses to retain that 10% target that we've been using, that provides about $4.2 million to be available for one-time capital items and fund projects or funding projects and low debt service. As far as the FY20 projections, the first quarter, that's more informational in nature. Everything, for the most part, is within the targeted percentage. I will note that if you see fluctuations in the expenditure, most likely it's fluctuations between capital outlay items. So, for example, MIS, it's the timing of when they're buying the computers, maintenance and license and so forth. You saw that with highway. The sidewalk, we had, the first quarter of FY18, we had a lot of sidewalk work done in FY19, or, I'm sorry, 19 versus FY20. We didn't have any of those charges. So, some of that variance is attributed to that. The other piece I will highlight is in the personal property collections and real estate. Right now, it shows 47%, which is a decline from FY18. It was noted shortly after the September 15 deadline that Brookfield Power had not made about a $2.2 million tax payment. Unfortunately, they had turnover in their accounts payable position, and they consolidated it into a new building, and they did not send us the correct address. So, they did not receive their tax bill on time, so they are, I'm thrilled that they're paying $14,000 in interest as well to pay their taxes this week.
Nice.
So, on that note...
Does anyone have further questions? Councilor Markot?
So, that presentation was both the fiscal year 19 and the first quarter?
Correct.
All right, because I was going to try to jump in between the two, but, and I think you addressed it in part when you mentioned that the 4.2 million would be available from the percentage you said back down to the 10%. Or is it 10 million percent of dollars?
It was 10% of fund balance is the target that most of the council has been using, which produces the availability of $4.2 million.
Okay. Because I noticed that the comparison between fiscal years 18 and 19, not a whole, not a large differential, 3.053 million, and the current year, 2.873 million. So, it's trending down a little bit. I was wondering how the first quarter fiscal '20 looks as far as the end of fiscal year '20. Are we going to trend down again? And then, of course, we're dealing with budgets shortly, and that'll be the next year out further.
That's correct. That impacts, we do not, for budgetary purposes, we do not use the year that we are currently in because they're not final audited numbers. So, we always use the snapshot at the previous year-end, which are audited in that case. So, I don't anticipate any more adjustment.
Which year would that be?
So, for FY21?
Yeah.
We will be using FY19's audited number.
Yeah, yeah. I wasn't sure if you were referring to 18.
No, 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 no. So, 20 used 18.
Okay.
And again, we use that, reducing it, the fund balance down to your target of 10%.
And you were talking about salaries as being part of the reason for some of the surplus. And I was going to ask a question, and then I realized you were talking about fiscal year 19, and the question I was going to ask was more about fiscal year '20. The positions that we added earlier this year, now have all of those positions been hired on schedule, and if they haven't, that would probably increase surplus, correct?
Yes, on both parts. So, there are, there were just one, Kathy's position, that was funded as of July 1st. So, that is looking like that's going to actually be delayed until after the election, similar with the fire inspector's position. with the fire inspector's position. Everything else, most of the other positions were a 1-1 target date, so it's a little premature to determine that. But usually what's been happening is by the time they refresh the job description we post, it is an extremely tight labor market right now. It is not uncommon for us to post some positions, you know, two and sometimes three times, which delays the entire process. But to your point, every week it's delayed, it will go into a surplus situation.
And during the budget deliberations for 2021, there'll be built-in increases immediately, because if one of those positions was scheduled to be a half a year, it was only budgeted for half a complete salary. Following year is going to be a full salary, so that's going to encumber the council next spring immediately.
That's correct.
I'm just concerned about the potential next downward turn in the economy and being overextended. I remember saying something after we added the series of positions to the administrator that last in, first out. It's an inventory term, but should something happen and we get really tight on our budgets, we need to be looking at that and projecting, and hopefully we can continue with roughly $3 million surpluses each year, as far as maybe underestimating revenue, being conservative on the revenue, hoping to get more. And likewise, on the other side, I don't know if we'd be conservative or liberal on the expenditure side, but coming in with a surplus on both sides as we see here in tonight's presentation.
And having just done the rating agency conference call last Wednesday, it is something they like to see. They want you to be very conservative on the revenue side and look at the worst, our near worst-case scenario on the expenditure side. I cannot explain auto excise tax. For the life of me, I, every year, we bumped it up. In theory, if you look at it, we all know that each year, your excise tax goes down, so at some point, this should turn the corner, and we are just not seeing it.
Do we have any sort of trending as to when it began? So we know how many years?
About four years ago, we started it. At that point in time, two years ago, and then three years ago, fiscal years, we saw valuation up in cars, as well as the number of vehicles being registered were up. And, you know, Ed's talked about coming out of the recession, you know, people that are buying multiple cars instead of, or buying newer cars instead of using their old car that's probably on its last wheel. The other component that we're seeing the last two years is the counts are not up as much as they used to be. They're holding steady, but we're not seeing the counts up. So the value of the vehicles are going up. We are seeing a lot more people leasing vehicles, which means they turn those over more frequently than they would if they were buying a car outlying. Those are the only possible explanations that we're seeing.
We do also track that pretty closely year over year, so we have data on annual auto excise going back at least 10 years.
Correct.
So we can also judge, when the downturn hit in 2008, 2009, we know how much our auto excise tax was affected by a major decline. Interestingly, it's not as much as you would think it might be, but it's something we're aware of when we try to put the budget together, is to look at trends over time, to be aware of what the potential downside size of the negative swing would be.
I would also imagine that the Auto Dealers Association might have some formulas. Maybe there's somebody there to get some guidance from.
I mean, if you look at the first quarter of the year, of this fiscal year, we're trending $80,000 more than we were the last quarter this time, our last year's first quarter at this time. The last thing I will offer the council, I mentioned the rating agency call last Wednesday. I did receive the draft rating today, and it will be published probably tomorrow morning. We retained our double A minus with a stable outlook, so they reaffirm that same rating.
Thank you, Heather. Any further questions for the Finance Director? Seeing none, do I hear a motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
I have a motion as second. All in favor?